Welcome everybody. Uh, I'm talking to the audience. Really quickly, as you'll notice, uh, I have my mask on there. There's a convention in the toolkit that allows us to take our masks off while we're addressing a crowd. So if you feel sorry for your child, take your mask off, please do so. We'd love for you to do that. Also, as we give it enough, I've got twenty-one public comments. I was really ask all of y'all to be respectful to each other and to us. We're all in the, in this together. We've all got the same goals, and that's to keep our kids in school, okay? That's what, what our goal is and what it should be. With that said, I, I appreciate y'all being here. And I want to give y'all through the Tuesday, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, um, Congress Committee for Education. Um, we will now, wherever you're been, when, give us the pledge and the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Father, it is love that brings us all together. We may express that love differently, but it is love for our students that brings us together. We pray, Lord, your blessing on our time this evening. We, we pray that you watch over us all, that you keep us safe. Both safe physically, but safe, keep our hearts safe. We ask all this and much more of our Lord's Prayer.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Gibbons. Moving along, I, I have a motion for a motion to consider a verbal amendment.
Mr. Gervin, I would like to make a motion to add additional comments before the upcoming meeting.
I have a motion by Ms. Stafford to add a board comment at the beginning of our meeting session. I have a second by Mr. McQuarrie, all in favor, make sure I have. All in favor, very good. We now have a... A...
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I have a second by Mr. McQuarrie, all in favor, make sure I have. Very good. The agenda has been, um, approved, and now we move it to board comment.
The last year, meeting the East Park High School, about fifty-eight hour route from men's dancing session. Today is surgery, the day after, I answered every phone call, replied to every email, and messaged with many parents and community members about the upcoming meeting. I did my absolute best to stay engaged. While I wasn't in the library at nine AM, the amount of messages, texts, and emails was appalling. How dare I not be at such an important meeting and what could be more important? Following the meeting, the emails saying they were discussing with my vote, which I didn't vote. One man called to tell me that we were discussing and would be sure we were fired. We've been cursed at, called cowards, and others who've had their full time found for us. One day, I got two calls, one asking for a mask mandate, one asking for it to be lifted. Both reminded me that I'm elected to work for the people and that they pay the salary. Which, out of all here and there, salary, three hundred dollars a month, I can safely speak for this entire board when I safely give back far more than that to schools via donor choice, teacher supplies, hub raises, and more. But we are elected to represent them, the parents, students, and all school staff. The ones we agree with and the ones we don't, both sides of every argument. There's eight thousand kids and eleven hundred staff. That night, I would have made it a five-two vote, and I can explain why. I hate these masks. My kids hate the masks. I have three kids in elementary school. But the only thing I just like more than masks is virtual school. When we started virtual, kids struggled. Teachers struggled and families struggled to make ends meet when they had to choose between their job or being home with their children. I asked teachers prior to that meeting about the mask mandate. Unanimously, they didn't want masks. I asked if they were okay with us going virtual if their full classroom were gray bubble words were tired quarantine. Their faces felt absolutely nice, and they came to avoid virtual, and they were okay if masks was what it took. Since then, due to the quarantine avoided data, many administrators and staff members have pleaded that this mandate remain in place in order for us to remain in school. Our toolkit, which I don't ever want to speak to fellow board members, but I think zero of the seven must fully agree with it, has different wording off about it. The wording has changed significantly since last year. Masks, school districts have flexibility to decide if the guidelines are recommended and not required. Quarantine protocols, school districts do not have flexibility and must follow these guidelines. Mr. Whitford has spent countless hours poring over the toolkit and speaking with other districts and state level attorneys. Our last guidance from Mr. Whitford, which was last week, was the quarantine protocol from the force of law in North Carolina behind them and must be followed. Our governor had a public meeting and gave us local flexibility on masks. He became the public hero. Then he closed the door and said, if kids are masked and there's an exposure, no one quarantines. If one student or both are not masked, everyone must quarantine. So did he truly give us flexibility? I would say no. So I watched other states and districts who started school before us. On August twentieth, twenty twenty-one, thirty-five districts in North Carolina were masked optional. As of September fourth, twenty twenty-one, five districts remained optional. I've watched school grade and school-wide quarantines, emergency meetings in North Carolina schools switch to virtual instruction and implement mask mandates. Where there's no staff, there's no face-to-face learning. Where there are hundreds in quarantine, there's no face-to-face instruction. This board fought hard last year to return face-to-face instruction. We emailed, we called, some visited rally, fight for the ability to have face-to-face instruction. We know that's where our kids succeed. We know families have to work and many don't have the ability to be with their kids during the day to support virtual instruction. To vote for masks, welcome to vote to cover kids bases, to vote for child abuse, to vote to hide their smiles or to not allow parents to report back. To vote for masks, we've been deeper to hope that quarantine could be minimal, but we could stay in school this year. I feel my hands are tied, and I know I'm not alone on that. We're trying to find a sustainable plan for this year to provide some more support for our students and staff. I want these seniors to have graduation and experience high school prom, want Friday night football, field trips to pep rallies and field day. We too are learning as we go and willing to pivot when needed such as bacteria usage. All the data being left and shared, how many actual COVID cases are coming from quarantine? Do masks work? Are rapid tests acceptable? All of this is great data that we need. Data that we can use to fight for local flexibility on the quarantine guidelines currently deemed not optional. This data does not change how many students have avoided quarantine due to the mask mandate. These are two very different questions and needs to be treated that way. I'm happy to work with and for anyone that wants to speak to individuals on the state level about inaccurate PCR testing and effective masking over quarantining. I haven't argued any of these points. I've emailed Dr. Cohen, Ozzy Vitilson, Governor Cooper, members of the NC Task Force, multiple legislative members. Do not finish quietly. Of I and others besides me, holding arms with pure respect, we'll start our thought and argue for accurate information and local flexibility. If any of us have become less responsive or answered less phone calls or replied to minimal emails, it's for emotional needs to help. In this set of best, best last week when he called to check on me, no one can protect our schools but us. I've answered the phone and opened my email many times in the last two weeks to be greeted with first word, same calling and yelling. I've tried to walk out of the room so my kids don't overhear the other end of the phone call. I know we have many administrators working twelve and fifteen-hour days who are recording the same treatment for parents. This is on both sides of the argument. We all have very different opinions, why we have a seven-member board. However, we do strive to respectfully communicate to each other. The same needs to go for communication with the public from us to you, and I would ask you to us, but at least toward administration and teachers. The teachers, administrators, nurses, Dr. Jackson, or any other central office staff, none of them wrote the toolkit or put any of the mandates in place. They're working excessive hours, far beyond what's ever expected, to try to keep our kids and students safe. Our teachers, staff, and students deserve so much more from us. We have to change the narrative that's currently in our school system. Mask mandates, COVID and quarantine, they shouldn't define this school year. We have students with significant learning gaps due to natural disasters from COVID. These students need us to fight on their behalf, fight to keep them in school, and fight to give them the resources they need to get back on gray bubble and set them up for long-term success. We need to give administration time to work with teachers, time for professional development, time to learn and grow. Our administration is tired, and many are questioning why they got into education. We have to let them rekindle that fire. They need time to get in the classroom, engage with students, walk arms with teachers, guide them through unprecedented times. There are so many things out of our control right now, but there's also so much we can control, and we desperately need to shift the mindset of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year before it becomes just another year contributing to an ethical education and growing achievement gap. We've been dealt a tough hand, but it's our job as board members and parents to set the precedence for this school year. We all have kids watching, and though they may be quiet and learning, let's set an example of how to respectfully disagree and interact with conflict.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stafford. I fully appreciate that. With that said, we will now move into further comment. Um, before we move into further comment, I am going to, I don't have my seat, now you all have to behave. So I'm just gonna wing this. Um, y'all be respectful. Again, we all live in the same county, we all want the same thing. We all need to respect each other, um, so, and let's just be nice and not say anything bad. With that said, Mr. Natasha Simmons. And please introduce yourselves, give us your names, and you get three minutes. And Mr. Richie Taylor, I already will be timed.
Evening, board members. Mr. Jackson, my name is Natasha Simon, and I have three children in our school. We appreciate that you will be here tonight. I know everyone is tired of hearing of masks issue, we definitely are too. However, since you made a rash decision at the last meeting to make them mandatory going back on your original vote to keep them optional near the days before school started, you mean us with no other option. Here we are again discussing it. While it was great that you gave the option for an exemption, that came with its own set of nonsense. First, I was asked to leave my child's open house the very next day, because that is not our intention. While the principal was very nice and discreet, it was beyond ridiculous that my child could not properly finish his open house. I gave her this mask exemption, and then she asked for mine. Considering I'm not a school, a student at this school, I do not have one. So she made a phone call, and whoever she spoke to said I had to leave if I was not going to put a mask on. I know many families that have taken their children out of our schools because of this issue. We would like to know how many exactly got withdrawn since the beginning of the school year? Do we have that number available to the public? And how much money is that lost now for the district who's impacted mostly by those lost funds? And exactly, when does the district get paid for children that are involved? We have a Facebook group for parents to vent and discuss everything that's going on with our schools right now. Uh, on the first aid school, many children were not allowed on the bus, even though they had an exemption. Therefore, making parents late for work. Another issue with the non-mask is that teachers are segregating students who are not wearing one and making them sit separately from the rest of the class. One woman's daughter was called out by the teacher and told to sit away from everyone else in the back corner of the room. That is unacceptable. At Newport Elementary School, children were given masks to wear, even though they had their exemptions. At another school, a twelve grader walked out and is now being homeschooled because his teacher was regrading him and other students that did not have a mask on. Unfortunately, the child is too scared and does not want the school or the teacher made. All of this could have been avoided if anyone on this board cared about our children. Mrs. Sauer stated in an email that she does not lose sleep over children wearing masks or not. Mr. Goodwin rushed the vote at the last meeting because he was ready for lunch. If the majority of you do not wish to be on this board any longer, if that's the case, and you truly do not care about our children, then I think it's time that you resign and let us take, and let someone else take their place, someone who is in our children's best interest first. We need people to listen to the parents, work with us, our children, and our teachers, to make sure our children are getting what they need. Though you received many emails to keep masks optional, you did not do so.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, for your time. Yes, thank you.
That's all right. I'm David, but I don't know my wife, so I'm really bummed.
What was that?
Stacy Goff. I have two kids right here in Morehead. I have two at Morehead Middle, one at Morehead Elementary. I've been in water and wastewater business for fifteen years. I work around toxic chemicals, anything from foreign gas to sulfuric acid. I've been exposed to pathogens from steel plant over the fifteen years. Nothing scares me more than having our freedoms slowly chipped away. From everything from forced mask mandates to now this documentary, forced inoculations, we've had and we've heard about other students and teachers that are being quarantined even though they're being masked. I'm here to say that you need to stand up and fight. If you don't want to fight, you need to step aside. Some of you are coming up for reelection, and trust me, I will be voting, I will be supporting, and I will be fundraising for people who want to support us and support our friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Please, now, now, please, let me go.
Hi, good evening. I'm Leslie Goff, and you can imagine me at Worcester, Maryland quite a bit. I have overview pages of what I have written out, I hate to say to you today, but I'm not going to read that. I'm going to speak from my heart, because we've heard that this is all about love, right? We just express it in different ways. Well, it's not loving to perpetuate a lie. It is not loving to tell that they have to ignore the way their body was created, to breathe in oxygen and breathe out all the stuff that makes them sick. It is not loving for adults who are supposed to be safe people to tell our students that they have to wear a mask, to punish our students, basically, we're suspending students for being in a room with somebody who tested positive for a disease that is ninety-nine percent survivable. This is ridiculous.
Yes, it is.
There are some people on this board that have a backbone, that are standing up for what is right. They're fighting on both fronts. They're fighting on this front here, and it's obvious which two of you is. And they're fighting up at the state level security. And some of you are just fighting at the state level. We need you to fight for us down here. We need you to fight for our kids here. If you can't do that, if you want to go to lunch instead of having a conversation about a compromise,
Yeah.
then you need to step down. You need to resign, and you need to let somebody else take your place. We will not comply. We have had information saying that these mandates and guidelines have the force of law. Would you like to know some other things that also have force of law? Separation, slavery, women couldn't vote. Those were all laws. Prohibition, everybody loves people in here like an object, okay? Those were all laws at some point, and at some point, somebody said, no, that doesn't mean no. And that is what they're saying. My constitution gives me the right to provide liberty and the pursuit of happiness.
Let's look at Mr. Orson White.
Hello, my name is Orson White. I just moved here a few months ago, so I don't know any of you guys. I don't believe in my mother. But I am a mom, and I'm very concerned about my kids, and I'm a mom, so to speak. When my kids turned, masks were originally optional in Carteret, they're ecstatic. But when the mask went to mandatory, you could see the defeat in their face. You see, Virginia, the resident county in a population of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight people, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-seven of that population are kids in public schools. Thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight are COVID cases. Here in Carteret, there is one hundred... I'm sorry. Fifty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-three of that population. Eight thousand, three hundred eighty-five students in the public school system, and six thousand, six hundred forty-two COVID cases. As you can tell, Carteret is much smaller than Kansas, to where we used to live. By going here, I've never felt lost. I can take my kids who watch a college football game with sixty thousand people without their masks on. Why are they wearing masks in their costumes? Last year, when virtual was in full force, two of my five kids suffered badly. One was so depressed, one burned himself, was digging out a house so he could see his friends up there. My six-year-old last year is so far behind the school right now because of COVID, I mean. He would cry and run away in computer. It's war for these little guys, and he's got a century card that says disorder, which is letting his speech in the mask. He's not wearing it right now, he doesn't want it. If he has to see a teacher's mask, if he has to see the mask, he doesn't know how to take part. We as parents know what is right for our children, not the state and not the school work. If our child is safe, we keep them healthy. If a child needs to wear a mask for medical reasons, yes, they should wear one. Kids get this all the time. Kids, they can don't have no interest of them. You should not be losing your childhood in a war. Before a school was in place, according to CDC, the pageant falls seventy, and students who are within three to six feet of their subject students are not considered close contacts as long as those students were well-sitting masked and parented. And that's on their budget.
Yeah, right.
In closing, I ask that masks go back to being optional. Kids are being segregated. I wasn't going to come to this, but I had to come today. My nine-year-old was in gym pop, sitting with her friend. Teacher comes up to her and says, do you have one of the four? She said, yes. She said, okay, you go to the end of the line. She was the only one not wearing a mask, and the only one asked to go to the end of the line, which is like that to the vote.
Wrong.
Mama Mary, a mask, a mask. My kids come first, and I do not want to keep them separated because they have a mask on.
Right.
I had a friend slash Aaron's son almost commit suicide.
Fine.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Scott Stelling, and my daughter is a student right here at the Oregon. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I believe that facts and data matter, and I trust that facts and data will matter in Carteret County. May this board have best proceed in your elective chair to communicate with children with those facts and data. Thank you for serving, Ms. Stafford. Sorry for your time. I want to talk about the regionality and outcomes based on mask mandates. If you look globally, it's very obvious, just look at a couple of countries, Israel and Sweden, two very different approaches. Two very similar outcomes at the end, right? Israel, very oppressive masking policies, very much smug right now. Sweden, they never did any of that, very good outcomes. Within the US, looking at how different states, counties, and cities have fair, based off of their masking mandates does not prove any benefits or efficacy of mask mandates. Now, Florida gets all the press. But look no further than states like Hawaii, Washington State, and Vermont, amongst others. Those three states have very oppressive mask mandates in the West End, and their cases were spiking exponentially. Uh, let's look at masks and masking for children. Last spring, most of the world, as we know, came to a granny hall, most schools closing for in-person learning. Sweden did not, nor did they ever. What did they do? They just applied common sense. They cleaned them. When kids got sick, they sent them off.
Yeah.
Uh, there was no deaths among one point eight million school-aged kids, no crazy spikes. Seasonal flu kills fifty thousand Americans per year on average. Every single year, many several hundred kids a year. What has Carteret County ever done special for the flu? Wearing masks for harmful children is terrible for child abuse. You have adverse effects for children wearing masks overwhelming, particularly, uh, packaged with a lack of proven benefit or efficacy of doing so. A recent study that included twenty-five thousand, uh, school-aged children, studied included the carbon dioxide inhaled because of wearing masks with several kinds higher than acceptable norms. Plus, the microbes that attack themselves, the masks that are continually reinventing, it's disgusting. Not to mention the destructive social and environmental effects of some of my, uh, folks here to serve. What can we do for our kids? Common sense. Good diets, exercise, washing hands, keeping a healthy mouth. A big part of this is to pay all that federal and state money that is being spent on free lunches and EBT cards to upgrade the nutrition of food served in our schools. It is borderline shameful, junk food offered with no good nutritious options most days. Bottom line, back to basics. Common sense, handle options, it doesn't matter. And that's what it needs to. Focus on things that still is improving the health of our kids that will provide far better outcomes than harmful mask mandates.
Thank you, Mr. Stelling.
Stephanie Horvitz, Carteret, this meeting has submitted a data request asking for details of our school system's COVID experience. This inquiry was unanswered because likely the data isn't being tracked. How can we make decisions without knowing detailed information? For instance, how many of the confirmed COVID cases were mask-wearing students? How many were quarantined as a result of being in contact with these students? Of those quarantined, how many actually became ill with symptoms? Of those quarantined and that became ill, what is the average base onset of these symptoms? I don't deny that there's a virus or illness spreading. I declare, though, that the issue is much more than masks, vaccine, and quarantine criteria. General Clinton said there is a war of a Marxist Communist agenda. He declared it an information war. Now, we know who to listen to. Do you rely on the CDC, whose master lying was the template one oh one? Do you rely on the FDA, who just passed the vaccine with no animal studies, with no long-term study? Do you rely on Dr. Fauci, who damning email released for FOIA? Said that he did fund gain-of-function virus research? Do you rely on American Pediatric Association, whose major donor is Pfizer? Do you rely on Pfizer, whose CEO will pay the vaccine? Do you rely on Health Human Services, who's violating the NERVO code by not giving informed consent? Not telling everyone this vaccine is an experiment, and that has risked our significance? Consider this, these agencies are the Wizard of Oz purporting to be the all-powerful. So who do you rely on? Consider Dr. Malone, the inventor of mRNA. He's warned against this vaccine. Consider Dr. Needham, a former Pfizer, um, executive. He said that vaccinating children is akin to murder. Consider Terry Willis, the inventor of P D R test, and he warned against, it's likely misused as a diagnostic tool. There are many courageous doctors speaking out, but they're being slandered and slammed. But you can look to them. These doctors are Dr. McCullough, Dr. Cahill, Dr. Christian Northwood, Dr. Delanto, Dr. Penny, and there's many more. Follow the money. In this war described by General Clinton, masks are a weapon, vaccines are a weapon, isolation is a weapon. F D L, data collection surveys, and C H T are a weapon. Censorship, lies, and division are weapons. Fear is a weapon. Dr. Lee Erick, former lady, served a profound statement. She said, if you think we're fighting a virus, you're going to act like a vaccine, a victim. If you think we're fighting a war, you're going to act like a warrior. Now, I'm not calling for virus, but my children will not be a pawn in this battle. My voice is my weapon, and truth is a weapon. Our battle is not against flesh and blood, or my battle is not against you, or my board, pull back the curtain. Pull back the curtain. Have you seen the recent testing scores? Have you seen the recent testing scores we made today? I ask you to focus on epidemics. And I, lastly, one last thing, you are not qualified to make medical decisions for our children. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Uh, my name is Wes Ryanhardt. Um, I have two children that attend Newport Elementary School. Um, I'm going to be honest, um, I really believe that you you do want what's best for my two girls, that you do want what's best for the children at heart. I have no doubt that you care about the families in this town. I've heard from almost all of you, I've emailed and had phone calls. You treat me with respect, um, and I appreciate that, heard you listen. And I think that I've heard pretty much unanimously from all of you that we're all on the same page for the most part, that we we don't want masks, we think they're ridiculous. The overall goal is to keep children in school. And I want that. My kids' experience works for like everybody else, and that really stuck. The extreme political heat around the issues of masks in schools is making it hard to have coherent conversations that we're seeing tonight. So our kids are back in school. Parents in all levels of public leadership are accountable to the decision they've made. But we need clear-sided discussions about which anti-COVID measures actually work and which actually are for about much better. So I am a, I'm 100% against masks. I've done the internet research like everybody else and spoken to doctors. I've seen what the CDC has done, um, the Pediatric Association's done, the materials they cite. It's very difficult to make the decisions, and I can appreciate the position that you guys are sitting there. So I, I think, I think that we do have to, even though we are looking at the issue of do we wear masks to keep kids in schools? I, I really think that the efficacy, the effectiveness of masks should be considered. Because I, I think that whether you have masks or whether you don't have masks, transmission rates are going to prove to be the same. Because kids are going to... So I think my, my biggest concern with if we carry on the damn order going is that there is not really an endpoint, not really a specific metric that I think we're all going to, with best intentions, we're going to find ourselves in a position that's hard to pack ourselves out of. So, you know, to, I don't think that you all are a rouse in the world. I don't think that you all have any ill intent. I'm just pleading, you know, like many other parents, that consider to remove this and that we will, we will let it all just play out. Our children will fly. But thank you for your time.
I apologize on behalf of the county for what I've heard here tonight and from what you had to go through. I apologize. I'm more about it. I'm sorry. I have three kids that went through the Carteret County School District and a public school. Currently, I'm a guardian and I advocate for points and have many children in school. So it matters to me, and I'm a member of the community. I vote for Walmart. Therefore, what happens in the community matters to me, just as it should to you. I'm a, may I practice it? If you're on the beach, you put some block on your children. Is it mandated? You may not. Thank you. Is it mandated? No. You do it for your protection. What about mine? While playing sports, you are put onto the death of protection gear on your children. Pelvis, pads, riding bikes, helmets. Is it mandated? No. The association requires, and you do will have problems. Why? For the protection of the children. What about mine? Because they're laughing here, everybody. Excuse me! Last year, we gained a new perspective and a greater respect for teachers and what they do. And now, because we don't want our children to be uncomfortable for the next 15 months and put a teacher that's rich and dear above them, everybody in the school district. We are a community that comes together in times of need. It's sad that masks have been mandated. As we as a community should be eager to temporarily de-comfer our children for our neighbors. My name is, depending where you're being, you know what I mean? I'm shaking right now. Yeah, I'm hot. You mean, I'm a little bit, I'm hot. Yeah, I know. I feel you. Listen. I respect it. I'm going to give you that, right? Because we're a community of love, our neighbors, love is not a fuss or a fear and you get them down around somebody who makes you happy. Love is choosing to do what's best for someone else. And what happens, what's the reason? There's some beautiful trees, but hard to live. What's the meaning of love and that it bears all things, always protect? I have to report, I don't know how you're a doll, I would not want to be in your position. I apologize to you, the easy you do, we have to respect our government. We have to respect our government.
Hi, y'all. Here we go. I'm going to ask you very much, yeah, somewhat speaking. I expect you to be respectful, again. We can all have different opinions, be respectful of that. I ask that you'll respect me, yeah? That is all we're asking, again. I will. I'm going to call the next person, but I, I truly, truly want y'all to be thoughtful and respectful of each other, okay? So the next person will be Ms. April Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is April Mitchell, and I have four children in this school district. First, I want to thank the two members for listening to the parent and community voting for last meeting and voting for choice to wear masks. We appreciate you voting for the people and not the politics. To all the school board members, we are disappointed in the choices and the voting of the last time. We're not being heard. We know the science does not support mask wear. We know that quarantine toolkit is absolutely ridiculous, yet instead of fighting it, you are falling down to it, afraid to stand up for what is right. What are you showing to the children? What kind of example are you showing the community? Those who are sick should stay home. Those who are healthy should be in school. It is simple. Do not quarantine or test children just because they were in the same room as someone else who was sick. We all know the CDR test, our false positive is designed to find the time. So kids, we're going home, being away from the school for two weeks if someone might have a allergy or a cold. It's ridiculous. Children should be able to breathe fresh air as well as school staff. I'm sure we can all conclude that this is not about masks. This is about pushing and promoting the vaccine. Why wouldn't it be? Doctors' offices get a certain amount of money after so many patients get vaccinated. Hospitals get $70,000, $90,000 per person that's positive and staying at the hospital for visits. I'm curious, how much does our county get for vaccinated persons? Do we get a certain amount of money for vaccinated people in schools? I would love to know this. Has anyone researched this? Is this why our county is pushing the mask mandate? This is really something you need to find out. Can you prove the county does not receive money for such things? We would love to see it. We would love to have access to the emails of when we went voting for the people that you represent, you're voting for the politics and the money. Shall we discuss our county health officials? Does that even hold a medical license? I don't understand that. I, I don't know if that's across the U.S., but I don't understand that. The head of local hospital, of a local hospital COVID unit, has told me that she did not have one COVID child need to enter hospital last month. Not one. Not one. The children that are there are there for the RCT and the MOC because of masks and poor news. We wonder why. Because the lower news system that masks cause, we stop listening to the made-up movie of the local hospital teachers out. I pulled my four children from the school district. That is over $20,000 for not getting. And I would love to reconsider wearing a mask, but right now they are breathing fresh air. They are playing a sport, and they are living like children should live.
My name is Lesley Richardson. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I've been a pediatrician and a adult pediatrician for over 30 years. In the course of my career, I've seen a number of illnesses that have disappeared because of vaccines and the preventative measures that pediatricians do every day. With well-child care to prevent these illnesses. There are young pediatricians who don't see some of the illnesses that I saw when I started my career. Again, pediatricians strive and stress with preventive care, which includes well-child checks, vaccines, and any measures to protect children. Early in my medical school career, we learned the importance of protective equipment to include masks, not only to protect us, but to protect patients. Um, I provided Dr. Jackson a copy of, um, a report from a school in Marin County, California, that does show what happens when the teacher did not wear the mask as was mandated and passed the, um, passed COVID-19 to 12 of the students. They had to, took it to their family members and also to another classroom. Copy of the classroom chart to show just how contagious it was in that one case where the teacher did not wear their mask. I see children every day in my office, and our office mandates that they wear masks. And I see young children. I see children with different developmental disabilities. And they wear their masks. They tolerate the masks in the office. I smile at them behind my mask. I can see in their eyes what they're responding to. My own two children in the school system understand the importance of the mask, and we're ready to continue to wear their masks because it's not a way of the mission. I know there's a lot of controversy about pediatric cases, but the numbers are increasing. In this county, the zero to 17-year population group is the second highest increase in cases of COVID recently. And just recently, an report came out saying since June, there have been 300 times higher cases of pediatric cases, and the hospitalization rate has gone up 600% since July. At the last meeting, there was a comment that there had only been four pediatric deaths in North Carolina. As a mother, as a pediatrician, I would say that's four too many. And just since that last meeting, there's been yet another pediatric death in North Carolina. And we have to remember that the children who are 12 will not yet hit the vaccine until you have pulled the vaccine. We all want the same thing. We want our children in school. I'd be the first to admit that my children struggled last year when we were doing virtual learning. And then with the other social interactions, I see young children who are not getting the benefit of going to playgrounds and playing because of COVID and wanting to be with other children. Certainly, their concerns again are the increased pediatric...
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Next up, we have the board of...
First of all, I'm going to shake this woman's hand for being a parent. My name is Forest Fair. And I missed the first meeting because of another situation that I made up my mind when I found out that I was going to leave here. I am a neighbor of seven children, count them all of them, and I don't like what I see. Just like the federal government, you are trying to muzzle our children like they are trying to do to us as adults. You are not listening to "we, the people." You do know that phrase from the Constitution of the United States? You have children to ignore "we, the people," and we are the ones that voted you to these positions to look after "we" as parents and our children. Yes, it's been a very bad situation we have been dealt with, but we need to handle it better. Y'all cannot stand up for us and do the right thing, then like somebody else said, resign. And if you don't want to do that, let me tell you what's going on around the U.S. There's a lot of these board meetings going on, and the people are fed up with it. They are, they are literally firing the board, making them to step down, and they volunteer themselves as board members. And I know this whole fact that he has done. And I have a feeling, when I'm here receiving them, we got some people here who would be glad to play any one of these. If you can not do your job and fight for us. You are sacrificing... Is that enough that our government has made us a life stock in this world of review on a county, county level to try and do it as well? Are you trying to get the D60? You are saying that we do not know what is best for our children and our families by this mask mandate. You are sacrificing the social, emotional, and psychological development on our children. This school board has no right to rip the personal responsibility away from the parents of these children. Family comes first before government. Since when did you become so wise and know what is best for us? I got news for you. You are not all-knowing and all-wise, and you never will be. You are more dangerous to these children than COVID-19 when there's a 90% of recovery. Quit your fear monitoring. The medical people you are listening to, CDC, NIH, WHO, FDA, Goodyear, the rest, who's for all people? Yeah, right. What about building these children immune systems instead of compromising it with these face diapers? You really do not have the right for these mandates when they have been proven over and over again. They do not work. Pay attention to the sources.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next person, Ms. Amy Merrill.
Good evening. My name is Amy Merrill, and I'm the mother of two children at Newport Elementary School. I stand here to be needing to say that mandating our children wear masks and denying their rights to breathe free air is unwarmed, not based on scientific truth, and will no longer be accepted. I, as your parent, know it's right for my children, and I make choices for health choices for my children. Not for public schools, the health department, or that KAA. There is not a single study that shows that it's effective for masking children, teens, or adults in real-world environments outside of medical field. There is no evidence that make face masks in the general population, neither as personal protective equipment, nor as a source of control to prevent outbreak. In fact, there are periodic studies to prove it. An August 2021 study published in the International Research Journal of Public Health found no association between mask mandate circuit and reduced COVID-19 rate in the U.S. A July 2021 experimental study published by the American Institute of Physics found that face masks reduce indoor aerosol by at most 12%, not enough to prevent infection, and the list goes on. Currently, schools are requiring children to be masked indoors with the exception of slumbering. Six hours a day is far too long to keep our children masked, especially when they are at work or in a work environment. Per calling for it in epidemiologist at the University of Alabama, it is brilliant and healthy to wear masks for prolonged periods of time because it collects bacteria, and bacteria is what proliferates. And the warmer and more moist environment is, the happier the bacteria is to multiply. I see them firsthand with my children, from rashes on their faces to seasonal allergies turning into colds, unless changed frequently throughout the day, masks are making our children unhealthy. Elementary school years are formative years that play a primary role in self-esteem and mental health, community connection, and key elements of support. There are over a dozen facial expressions that cannot be perceived or to learn during the most formative year when we cover our children's faces. How does the teacher know if their students are lost or having a vaccine? And aside from emotion, how do our little learners continue to develop... And aside from emotion, how do our little learners continue to develop their speech and language skills? By masking our children who are living their senior ability and full state of children's success. According to the Constitution, we are guaranteed the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness, emphasis being on liberty. And although everyone here this evening may not have the same opinion, that's okay. Tonight is about us, parents, and the choice. It was right for each of our own family to choose.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill. Next up, we will have Eric Tunde.
Good evening, school board. My name is Eric Tunde, and I have a daughter in elementary school. You know, I have a bunch of stuff I was going to read tonight, but I figured it'd be best just to kind of wing it, just study my heart. But I am going to read something that I think is of great importance, and all the brother faith is out there. Thank you. That's what it's about. It's about our right for our children to choose what's best for them in medical. Everybody else knows that we're losing our freedom. This is not about a virus. This virus was intended for other purposes. Dr. Fauci, I agree, he was on the gain-of-function. He was in the North Carolina, right here, it was funded right here in North Carolina. Chapel Hill, thank you. And then, when you got basically more Tory put on, they sent it over to Wuhan in China, where they continued to gain-of-function research, three point seven million dollars, probably more than that. This is not about a virus. This was intended to destroy our country and mask our children. It is doing more psychological damage to these children. It is not about protecting the virus. I'm going to read this statement right here. This was from American Frontline Doctors, that actually was censored because they spoke the truth. They didn't want the truth out there. In an early publication, the WHO stated that face masks are not required as no evidence is available on its usefulness to protect non-sick persons. In the same publication, the WHO declared the cloth, cotton, or dog mask are not recommended under any circumstance. Listen to this. The same publication further conflicted itself by stating due to the lower filtration, durability, and overall performance of fabric face masks, the usage of woven fabric masks, which cloth and/or non-woven fabrics should not, should only be considered for infected persons and not for prevention practice in asymptomatic individuals. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention made similar recommendations stating that only symptomatic persons should consider wearing face masks, while for asymptomatic individuals, this practice is not recommended. I want to ask you, board, tonight. I know that you all have got a tough decision, and really do, I believe you do care about the children. I honestly believe that. If you care about the children, they need to breathe resoxygen. When they're re-breathing their own carbon dioxide back into their lungs, that's suppressing their immune system. I've been researching this since the pandemic, over a year and a half, I can talk for hours, you know, about the truth I found out. The CDC is lying. They are corrupt. And if they're corrupt, yeah, they're corrupt, and they're corrupt, and they always come by the slogan, "We're our country and take our service." And a year from now, what will this look like? Time, let's say.
Next up, we have Mr. Frithro Borak.
Thank you for giving us the chance to speak today, and for those who answered by email with Sadler, Mr. Davis, and Miss Chadwick, thank you. And I think we all agree, I don't think anybody here is wants the fourth a mask on a child's door. I think all of us want it to be optional. And this is not about the mask. I mean, are my friends with a mask? That's fine, I would never, maybe rip that mask off, I would never do that. But if I catch you in your car wearing that mask, when you're alone, okay, now you're real special. But the big picture is that we've got millions of people crossing the border without COVID testing. We have people coming in from Afghanistan that are not being tested, that are coming to live in Jacksonville for, for censorship. They're coming in. So it's just to distract us, to blow this off, let it be optional, and let's keep our eye on the big picture, which is our sentiment. Thank you.
Uh, next up, we've got Dan Augustin. If I'm pronouncing correctly. Don. Don, sorry about that. Augustin, it's been butchered way too many times. My name's Don Augustin. Grandfather's in Kent, Pitts, two of which go to progress county schools, other ones are scattered throughout North Carolina. I've worked at Cherry Point for the last thirty years. I've worked around chemicals, dust particles. One of them is cadmium and chromium. We have to wear a full-face respirator to work around it. It is a bigger particle that causes cancer. We have to wear that to keep that. Now, do you think a microscopic organism as COVID-19 is going to get stopped by that little plastic paper mask? Or a long mask? You're crazy. I've got all, everybody else already done the research. I brought it to you. They're not effective. If you're sick, fine, stay home, wear your mask. If you have to go out in town, wear your mask to keep it from you coughing and putting it out in the air. But as far as me, it's not doing me any good. It doesn't stop the virus. As far as I'm concerned, the mask ought to be optional. If you feel like you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. I wouldn't touch, I wouldn't. Keep you from doing it. Do what you want. This is a free country. Do what you want. But the mandate that kids wear a mask is not healthy for our children. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Feliz, our president.
Sir, she's allowed to go along with us to speak.
Okay, Captain, Mr. Nandez. Gentlemen, next up, we have Mr. Brian Griffin.
Gentlemen, thank you. I'm Brian Griffin. I have two graduated from Croatan, I got three in Croatan, and one in Broad Creek. I know two of you that interact with me personally. I honestly believe you're good men, so I'm not up here to talk bad about your character or intentions or anything like that, but I will take issue with the decision made at the last meeting. My fellow residents and citizens, I think y'all are talking up the wrong street. Convincing the board that COVID is not a danger to our children, they know that. We saw the video at the last meeting, they all sat there, no masks on in school. They understand the number that three hundred and seventy-some kids under the age of eighteen in the United States have died of COVID-19 from the infection. That's almost half of the same number of kids that die of the common flu in twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. COVID-19 is not dangerous for our kids. Mr. Jenkins is up there wearing a hefty bag, he wants to, he does not, this is not, this is not, I don't think we are needing to convince them that COVID-19 is a problem. The problem is the quarantine policy. All right? And that's where I say this. And you, as board members, I would love to see you stand up and fight and change this quarantine policy. We could have automatic emails or phone calls if we just wanted state policy character to us. That's not what I want. I want leaders, I want stand-up men, and then a character. Lastly, I would just say this. I would even take issue with the very first premise of this meeting, saying we all want our overarching goal to have kids in the school. That's not my overall goal. My overall goal is for my children to be raised properly, and I think that sitting in school, obeying half-heartedly rules that they know full well are ridiculous, but the teachers know full well, it undermines authority, undermines the credibility of the teachers. And I think teaching my kids that covering our face, something that they know is inherently wrong, is a, is a good thing, when it's not. And I don't let anybody lie to me. And lastly, you know, if safety is our number one goal, which I think is, then I would suggest to those of you in the crowd that believe that anything and everything we can do to save one child's life in a nation of three hundred and fifty million people, don't ever go out above twenty-five miles an hour. So remember to it. Make a nationwide speed policy at twenty-five miles an hour, you say it won't happen to you. You won't do it. You won't do it. Gentlemen, thanks for your time. Gentlemen and ladies, thank you for your time. Please change your time.
Next up, we have Kara Watson.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. My name is Kara Watson. I am not a great speaker and a fine speaker. But I thought I had to come today. I am a mother as well, and I understand the situation. And I understand situations like that, we just have to do something new and different to still represent the constituents and the citizens that they say they can't be identified, that they want to do that. You stated in the opening that you emailed the governor. Have you called to schedule an in-person meeting with the governor? I haven't gotten a response via phone, email, anything. Okay, so, but have you tried to schedule in-person meetings? Because that would be appreciated by everyone here, also, if you know. Anyone else on the board, I would ask the same thing of you. If you tried, attempted, scheduled with the governor to see, would you have to say, "See, you can make your voice heard more?" Because we do know that a lot of elected officials and members, elected members in the communities, agree with most of the people in this room. However, they're afraid to speak when it's like they don't have a voice, or they simply haven't tried. And we would like them to try. Yeah. Working in hospitals, I'm not a doctor. I've worked in hospitals, though, there's different fields that work with them. Not everybody has to be a doctor and understands the very simple things. The masks that you are wearing, not much to understand, it's for faces, to protect yourself, protect others, many different reasons why you wear them. But unless it's an NID virus being switched out regularly, is there really science to back a guy wearing them? That's really my question. And children, not only masks, wearing truthfully, and hopefully you do have the ability on this subject, the kids aren't only having to wear masks in school, they're forcing them to sit in specific places, in cafeterias, where they cannot talk and socialize with their friends. Even if they're in the same area, they have to sit in separate tables sometimes by themselves. And it's not just if they're wearing masks not that, but can you change that? Can you change whether sitting with children for COVID, or is that also only the government that can do so? I ask that, because it's really affecting kids. This is huge for our children. They are learning to not respect their teachers even more so than what we've grown accustomed to. And I just, I want to thank you for your time tonight. I want to just be listening. But while little ones are starting to get very sweet, and I know, I mean, you have, some of you may not have heard that, well, they're speaking to you, it's all. And I'm hoping now that they start to really listen to more constituents, more citizens who are very uncomfortable speaking in public, however, know a little bit about how viruses spread, a little bit how these children are feeling, how the country is feeling, and, you know, just thank you. Right, thank you.
Next up, we have Susan Wutter.
Good evening. My name is Susan Wutter. I live in Bothell, North Carolina. All of my children are around twenty-eight, thirty-five, and thirty-eight. I am here on behalf of my firstborn grandchild to be her voice. She started kindergarten this year at Bothell Elementary. So I feel very compelled to be here to show my agreement for most of these people who have already spoken this evening. This past year across this great country, we had students who were all forced to wear masks, those students who were fortunate enough to go to school and did not have to have virtual learning, forced to wear masks. But all the studies that have been done since then show that they developed physical, emotional, and significant educational problems. A study out of the United Kingdom of fifty thousand students showed that three-quarters of those students now require remedial language skills. Other studies have indicated that masking increases the risk of children getting sick from moisture and contamination to themselves from the mask that they are wearing. The children go through the day wearing filthy masks burned with germs. There's evidence out of Florida that shows that the districts, the districts that force students to wear masks did worse in school than those who wore no masks. In Sweden, where they had full-time in-person school, no masking and no social distancing, the children did not get sick, and there was virtually no transmission to teachers. I'm a former educator. What is heartbreaking to me, and you can see the emotion that I have, is that after attending my grand, my granddaughter's first week of school, every day that has passed, I can see how she's just disheartened. And when she gets off the bus, her first words are, "I can't breathe." She's in a mask from seven oh five a.m. until three thirty in the afternoon. I am going to urge my daughter to sign the mask exemption form. Thank you for your time.
One, we are at last, but not least, Mr. Kelsey reporting.
Hello. I would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And I would like to start by saying that this virus is not going away. Pathogens that animal or those who are cannot be eradicated. So do you plan on implementing mask mandates across our schools? And if so, then what's next? I mean, vaccination mandates? I would like to start off by saying I'm a Croatan High School junior, and I am vaxxed with this. So I'm not here for myself. I'm here to stand up for my classmates who are too scared to do it themselves. My classmates are forced to wear face masks over their mouth and nose, preventing them from obtaining the amount of oxygen they need, despite the fact the science proves masks have been effective. Data shows that masks and face coverings do not work to prevent the spread of any viral illness. This has been determined by at least three NIH-funded studies, which show coronavirus, as well as other respiratory viruses, are spread by aerosol particles small enough to pass through any mask. These masks are detrimental to the health of students across the country. They have caused increased viral and bacterial infections, lack of oxygen, carbon dioxide retention, dizziness, headaches, passing out, anxiety, brain damage, especially to younger children, not to mention the distraction from the learning environment. Students are constantly touching their face in face masks, especially the younger ones, increasing the spread of germs. Face masks also cause us to breathe the same air over and over, which causes both carbon dioxide and lack of necessary oxygen. The CDC estimated four hundred and eighty kids died of the flu from twenty-eight to twenty-nine a.m., which is more than a drop from COVID-19 in the past year and a half. Where were the mask mandates then? The flu is more harmful to us children than the coronavirus, so why the fear-mongering mask? The CDC, WHO, and New England Journal of Medicine have previously stated that there is no need for mask wearing when you are healthy. This is proven science, which has not changed, even though their narrative sure has. Now for social distancing. As Dr. Kelly Victory says, this was As Dr. Kelly Victory said, this was brought to light by a high school student science fair project. There are no controlled studies that demonstrate social distancing reduces viral transmission, but it is widely promoted as one of three ways to reduce transmission, just as was asymptomatic spread, which has too been proved false of the data out of the room and several other meta-analysis, so COVID-19 did not transmit from asymptomatic people. So let's take this one step further. The most complete data we have today of the new Delta variant is from Israel, who is one of the highest vaccination rates in the country, around 70%. What does it show? It shows that vaccinated have a six to 13 times higher infection rate than people who have COVID natural immunity and are unvaccinated. Those with Pfizer vaccine are also 27 times more likely to have severe symptoms, eight times more likely to be hospitalized because of it. I'd like to encourage you to stand up for us students, follow the science, and the CDC, World Health Organization, and that national institute of health to stop the challenges. Thank you.
If anybody on the board has something to say, take it right. I have now looking for a motion to approve a consent. Mr. Chair, I move to remove item 5.14, considered as part of F D students' full access. I have a motion by Reverend Newman to remove item 5.4. I have a second. Ms. Whitley, I say that all in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Now do I have a motion to approve a amended consent? I have a motion by Mr. McQuaid, I have a second. I have a second by Ms. Danner, all in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Next up, we've got Mr. Blair Probst.
Dear Board, for you, we have a policy for second read. These policies come from the School Association's Spring 2021 Act. These policies do not have any redundancy as a first read, and I don't really have any effect on anybody.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve second read of the policy, second read that presented. We have a motion by Mr. McQuaid, we have a second. A second by Ms. Whitley, all in favor, raise your right hand. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Board. Next slide, it is the policy for first read. Again, these policies come from the Update Act from the spring of 2021 revisions. There were really nothing in there to really provide me with these revisions, although we have to answer your questions that you may have, but it's really under the regular intention. Yes, sir.
In Policy 4400, on access, there are several places where medical professionals have been more physician, have been replaced with healthcare practitioner, and I was just curious if you could define that actually.
I think it's a more general term to be used in that area. The information that was sent by the School Association really didn't highlight reasons for that, which is sort of a head for reasons, but I think it was more a generalized term.
Right. And then also, it says access is due to isolation ordered by the local health officer or the state board of health. So the local health officer was added in. What does that refer to?
That's a great question. I don't have any answers. I apologize, but I don't have any answers.
And one additional thing, and this is in section C of that 4400, the revised section C, it says access is due to isolation ordered by the local health officer or state board of health. Also, I would assume that should include quarantine, if that's the case, maybe that's probably what I'm, I didn't see that in there. And if you, if we could find out for second read, sort of what the local health officer is supposed to refer to, as I understand it, only the state board of health is able to issue quarantine orders, and only the state, the health department is able to issue isolation orders. So I was curious what that other.
Well, I can't speak that, and I'm going to have to ask this, the School Association, I wonder if they're turned. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Probst.
Thank you.
Dr. Jackson, before you begin, would you like us to ask questions as you go after, I'm sure parts of you want to hold it.
I work with Board Education, so I ask the way as you feel it. Happy to answer any questions you have to go. Good evening, Board members, and certainly appreciate all who are gathered, and I appreciate the passionate advocacy of parents and grandparents for the children's education, and certainly recognize that as a great strength of public education in our country and our state. At the last meeting, the Board asked that data be collected during our first two weeks of school, the first 11 days. Today, we concluded our 11th day at school, and so I'm here this evening to share that data with you. As we move forward, I was asked to share information from the Health Department on behalf of our Health Director, Nina Oliver. And so this information with the Health Department's logo on it comes directly from the Health Department, provided by Nina Oliver, Ms. Oliver. This first slide, this third slide presentation, but first slide, for sure, are four key metrics, statewide data, the metrics of daily number of people currently hospitalized, daily cases by date reported, positive tests, a good percent of total tests, and what percentage of emergency department visits this season are for COVID-like illness compared to previous data. All four data sets are rising. Yes, sir.
Dr. Jackson, during our last meeting with Nina Oliver, our Health Director, I asked, I've seen some of this information already, and I ask that you could please also break this down to show the same metrics for our kids, you know, 17 and under, or K through 12. And I think that would be very helpful to be able to differentiate that. So I told her that last time we ended up meeting. I see that those stats and metrics have been added. Do you know whether either that's the gather those stats, these same stats, or that those they?
I can't speak today, and I can reiterate that question to her before we go back.
This is, this is not, this is great, but we are actually dealing with our, I think it's really important seeing how we're dealing with our kids.
Yes, sir. I'll ask you.
It's on the left side. It's on the left side. I've got the information.
The next item that comes from the Health Department, the number of new COVID-19 total cases for 100,000 persons by the county residence for 14-day period from August 17th to August 30th. On this map, the color code refers to the rate, and Carteret County is in the second highest color code. The next slide from our Health Director's COVID-19 desk as a lagging indicator, there are some questions she said previously about comparing the influenza desk to COVID desk, and according to this information she's provided, there have been 14,468 deaths in the last 16 months, 1,275 deaths in the past 10 years for influenza.
Be quiet, please. Dr. Jackson, your presentation.
For members of the National, a bit of information in the Health Department, it's the case rates increase. Case rates according to our Health Department are increasing, and the rate is rate among those people, persons 18 to 24 years of age, followed by those zero to 17-year-olds. Case rates for children are higher than the January peak levels. On this, just to help read it, the yellow line is zero to 17, the red line is 18 to 24, the green line is 25 to 49, the purplish line is 50 to 64, the blue line is 65 plus. The North Carolina case counts by age 0 to 17, provided by Ms. Oliver, shows down the first column, the ages by age group 0 to 1, 2 to 4, 5 to 9, 10 to 14, and 15 to 17. And then across the columns, the weeks ending 7/25 through 5/5 through August 22nd. So you'll see each of those age groups, according to this data, have increased for each of those age groups across the time from 7/25 to 8/22. In terms of Carteret County data, provided by our Carteret County Health Department, looking at the week 7/25 through 8/22, the percent positive five weeks for all age groups in Carteret County is, as of this last line, 8/22 to 8/28, 12.4%. The state daily percent positive is 12.6%. The goal is 5% or below. Carteret County case counts for ages 0 to 17 through the month of July and August. For the month of July, there's a total across those weeks of 38 cases. For the month of August, that jumped to 216. She's indicated an increase of 468% cases between July and August. In terms of Carteret COVID case counts the last five weeks by age, again, the age categories 0 to 1, 2 to 4, 5 to 9, 10 to 14, and 15 to 17, going down the first column, and then across the columns, you'll see a week ending July 25th all the way through the week ending August 22nd. The week ending August 30th and 31st is just a two-day week, and so you'll see those totals at the very bottom, ranging from 22 the week of July 25th, to 58 the week of 8/22, and then an additional 10 on August 30th and August 31st. This hospitalization information was provided by the Health Department as well. Hospitalization for all groups 0 to 17, 1% of all of North Carolina hospitalizations, or a total of 12,373. And then you'll see the percentages by age group 17 and under, 1%, through 60 to 60 days, at 21%. This final slide from our Health Department is a reminder, this is about balance and assessment of risks and benefits, no drive lines to safe or unsafe. It's about layering prevention strategies to reduce risk of spread as much as possible. The goal is to keep children in school, recognizing the substantial benefit of in-person learning in school. The strong school's toolkit recommends layers of mitigation prevention strategy. At this point, I will move forward into school system data, beginning with our prevention strategies currently in place, again, looking for a layer mitigation approach to the pandemic. The first bullet is the required and use of a seating chart in all of our classrooms, buses, and cafeterias. This helps with the arduous task of contact tracing. Contact tracing is based on six feet of distance or 15 minutes over a 24-hour period required through the toolkit. Using a seating chart helps our nurses, and I'd like to pause for just a second and recognize as a role of efforts of our nurses late at night. Late at night, our nurses have called me because they're still completing their work, they're calling parents. Unfortunately, nurses sometimes are on the front line of some really hard feelings. They encounter frustration. I've spoke with them today. I did my best to thank them for their hard work. They have a tough, tough task. They're required to follow as we are, what we're required to follow, they often are at the front line of communication, sometimes take it on the chin. So I certainly want to thank and share my appreciation for our school nurses. The second bullet I have been stressing, social distancing of staff members in meetings around meals and social situations. The double mask exemption for close quarantines does not apply to adults, that only applies to our students. So two adults wearing a mask would not be exempt from the close contact quarantine if there were a positive case. We are continuing this year to, yes, sir.
Real quick, that also does that that double mask requirement applies to athletes.
Correct. That's correct. According to the toolkit, the double masking does not apply in that type of situation. The next bullet is the continuation of spraying our buses. We began that last year, so we are doing that after each of our bus runs, to clean our buses and make sure they're prepared for the next run. We're continuing to wipe down our desks between classes, and as I pause to say thank you to our nurses, I also want to pause and say thank you to our teachers, last year witnessed Teachers who would stop as students were exiting to literally clean every desk in the room, and we're doing that multiple times today. Our teachers, men and women, who serve our children, which is absolutely outstanding and heroic on our. We have cautioned that we not use our water fountains to drink directly from. We are encouraging children to fill a water bottle or to bring water, certainly add it in the cafeteria as well, just trying to reduce any sort of transmission. We are doing our best to track all mask exemptions, cases, and quarantines, as instructed by the Board of Education, and I'll be happy to share that information. During the last meeting, the Board asked.
Can I ask one quick question, please, before you move to that slide?
Let's go ahead and put this on the floor.
I thought we were still to be. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, in terms of our last meeting, we were asked to collect pieces of information, and so this evening I want to give you that report, was asked to collect information on actual school affected cases, and we'll remind you of that definition, on actual student quarantines, on estimated avoided student quarantines, on actual staff quarantines, and then the total number of mask exemptions in the school system. And so looking at the first 11 days of school, utilizing the term "school affected case" as defined, it's the same term and the same definition we had last school year, a school affected case is an individual who's recently present in one of our school buildings, in close contact with others, less than six feet apart for more than 15 minutes. And so from our school affected cases during the first 11 days of school, this is accurate as of approximately 4:15, last time updated the presentation before driving here, at 146 cases, which represents 1.85% of our current enrollment, just under 7,900 students. In terms of looking at a comparison for our school affected cases weekly numbers, 2020, 2021, you'll see the first full week, so last year we started in school year with a two-day week, and so setting that to the side, looking at the first full week, we had zero cases, the second week we had four cases. This year, this will be the Monday through Friday numbers, the first week we had 47 cases, school affected cases. The second week we had 63 school affected cases. Looking at by day, the first 11 days at school, we'll see that the first day at school, August 23rd, we had eight cases, that dropped the next two days, seven cases, five cases. That Thursday, August 26th, it jumped to 15 cases, dropped on Friday to 12 cases, as we returned to school on Monday, August 30th, it jumped to 21 cases, dropped on the 31st to nine cases, back up to 16 cases. Thursday, September 2nd, we had 10 cases. Friday, September 3rd, seven cases, and then following the holiday weekend, today we had 36 cases in the school system. And these are all positive cases. Looking at our student quarantines, today we had 941 quarantines, which represents 11.9% of our current enrollment. One brief question that we received is how do we have quarantines if we have a mask requirement? One of the ways that that happens is during lunchtime, of course, our students have to remove their mask, whether we're in the cafeteria or the classroom, if they're within six feet, for more than 15 minutes, that constitutes a close contact. Each of our schools are very different in terms of the facility, some of larger cafeterias, some of smaller cafeterias, some of larger classrooms, some of smaller classrooms. And so our schools have worked harder to try to social distance the students as much as possible, but during lunch, the numbers we had, we just have been unsuccessful. And so certainly that's a part of our quarantine number. Additionally, and we'll talk about in just a moment, the exemptions to the quarantine policy. policy. If the two students, or only applies to students or children, if the two students are both wearing a mask, then the student who is the close contact, if they do not have symptoms, are exempt from the quarantine. However, if the student tests positive, is not wearing a mask, then the student would then be quarantined. And so the mask, having a mask is not guaranteed of no quarantines in the school system. Continuing on, looking at our actual student quarantines and comparing month to month from year one, 2020, 2021, to year two, 2021, 2022, we see that for our quarantines on a monthly level, August of 2020, we had 126 students quarantined, September of 2021, we had 300 students quarantined. For this year, in the month of August, we had 634 students quarantined. September through today, we've had 513 students quarantined. In the day of point avoided student quarantines, each of the nurses and administrators were asked to, as we went through the school year, to look at the number of close contacts who would have been quarantined if not for one of the quarantine exemptions. And so this number comes from our schools today, through today, through board block roughly this afternoon, we've avoided 1,758 quarantines, which represents 22.28% of our enrollment. I've listed the exemptions, I've tried to pare it down. As you know, the toolkit, each of those exemptions are about a paragraph long, you have to follow that toolkit when it comes to our quarantines. But in a nutshell, if those individuals are wearing a mask and the close contact is not symptomatic, the close contact is for children only, the close contact is not apt to quarantine. If the close contact is fully vaccinated and not symptomatic, and the close contact does not have to quarantine. If the close contact is tested positive for COVID within the past three months, they would not have to quarantine. And then the Board will be exempt, as close contact you test positive for antibodies, if there's limited or no contact, persons of high risk for severe COVID illness, on a case-by-case basis, as approved by the Health Department, also may be exempt from In terms of our actual staff quarantines, from the August 9th date, which was when staffed again for four back or 12 months, staff through today, we've had 112 staff quarantines. Forty-nine of those were due to being in close contact, 62 of those were due to being symptomatic, and then we have one other. And again, that close contact is within six feet or more, or for than 15 minutes, keeps us within a 24-hour period.
Can you give us the...
Total mask exemptions, the Board asked that we track that number, so that as we approached the mask exemptions, we created a form for parents to fill out. We did not ask for medical documentation at that time, recognizing how difficult it is to go there before school started, how difficult it is to get in to see a pediatrician in the best of times, and so certainly wanted to work with our parents. We currently have 214 mask exemptions, which represents 2.69% of our total enrollment, approximately just under 7,900. We also have 16 staff members who requested and received a mask exemption. At this time, the Board would like to recognize Mr. Whitford, who is our school attorney, who's going to share the statutory requirements around the toolkit with regards to isolation and quarantine.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, as you consider the exterior matters, from a purely legal perspective, I must confess, an issue that could adversely affect taxpayers of our county if you make decisions that are contrary to the public health laws of the state. The issue of this potential school system, not to mention school official liability, if a student or his parents or grandparents catch COVID as a result of exposure at school and become seriously ill or gotten busy or die, no matter how remote that possibility is. As a governmental agency, the Carter County Public School System and its officials, including Board members, have qualified immunity against lawsuits for personal injury. Qualified immunity basically means that a lawsuit can be thrown out of court because governments, even local governments, are protected by a document called solid immunity, which means you can't sue government or certain matters. But this is quote qualified, close quote, immunity, and it can be lost under certain circumstances. Now, all I just said is general public knowledge, and much of the rest of what I was saying would be appropriate for closed session under the attorney-client privilege. But the issues now facing us are most unusual, and perhaps the most spirited of my career. And the Chairman and I have agreed that regardless of the decision the Board makes tonight, it will be helpful for the public to understand some of the legal considerations that go into a Board decision in this country. We have a public health law in North Carolina, though arguments of which go back to Moreland Center. The public health law addresses infectious disease and other public health matters. There is a commission for public health, which has been around the Moreland Center, and it is specifically authorized to issue something called control measures to stop the spread of infectious disease. The commission has adopted regulations with the force of law to address dozens, perhaps hundreds, of infectious diseases. By the way, when I was a boy in the 1950s, one of the most serious infectious diseases threatening children was polio. And through the work of the state health agencies, the local health department, we had my lovely elementary school in Puma, North Carolina. Students were lined up and given sugar cubes to swallow, each with a drop of polio vaccine. And that's pretty much how everyone my age in North Carolina received their polio vaccine. Now, rather than writing a multi-hundred-page manuscript on control measures for all the different infectious diseases, the Commission for Public Health incorporates guidelines and recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control for some specific diseases as the control measures in North Carolina. And that's what we're dealing with in North Carolina now. These control measures, guidelines and recommendations is what they are called from the CDC, they end up as the mandatory law of North Carolina because they are issued by the Commission for Public Health. The North Carolina Department of Health Human Services, known as DHHS, serves as the staff to the Commission for Public Health. And last summer, DHHS began incorporating the control measures for COVID in a publication known as Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit. The school officials across the state have used the toolkit to figure out how they were to respond to COVID matters. The toolkit itself is not the law, but according to DHHS lawyers, it encapsulates the law. I've been spending a considerable amount of time over the last several weeks dealing with what is referred to as quarantine and isolation in the toolkit. The commission's regulations for quarantine and isolation are quote control measures, close quote. And under the state statute, we are required to implement the practical effect of quarantine as it relates to presence on school campuses of infected or potentially infected individuals. That is, that is to say, if the control measure provides quarantine, our responsibility is to keep the person from coming on campus for the duration of the presumptions they presume to quarantine during. That way, an infected person or person who may be infected is kept away from hundreds of others on school campuses. Schools are required to keep infected and potentially infected persons off campus. We do not quarantine anyone because quarantine, under the classic definition, is that a person is confined to a specific space for a specific amount of time. And we don't do that. We just tell folks who, under the guidelines, have got to be, have got to stay off campus to stay off the campus. Now, let's circle back to the issue of school system liability. We have qualified immunity from lawsuits for personal injury under general law, but also under emergency COVID legislation adopted by the General Assembly last year. But immunity under the general law and under that special emergency COVID legislation only exists for ordinary negligence. It does not exist for gross or willful negligence. And what I'm getting ready to say right now, very important, an intentional violation of a statute designed for the protection of human life is a classic example of gross or willful negligence. By way of example, a stop sign is a form of law. If a person decides that the Department of Transportation has made a mistake in placing a stop sign at a particular intersection, and therefore he runs the stop sign, but it causes a collision and injure your bed, there will be a claim, and it will include a claim for gross negligence. In the situation with COVID quarantine in the school set, the commission's control measure is essentially a stop sign. If we don't follow it, and someone gets seriously ill or dies, we can expect one of those plaintiff's lawyers that advertise on television all the time to file a claim against the school system, and the individual officer involved went to decision not to follow the control measures, and that claim will include, a claim for gross or willful negligence, so that this plaintiff's lawyer can get around what quote otherwise the immunity from the claim. Add to that that the school system does not have traditional liability insurance, and the risk management agreement that we do have with the North Carolina School Board Association does not pay damages. After that, that indicates a gross negligence, punitive damages can be added to general damages. So if any school system violates the law, whether they agree with it or not, and someone is seriously injured, expect the following. Number one, a claim for gross negligence to get around the immunity thing. Number two, a claim for punitive damages. And number three, no insurance to pay damages. This exposes any school system to potentially millions of dollars in damages. And where will those funds come from if a case goes bad for a school system in North Carolina? Well, the answer is the taxpayers who count, and potential from the officials who made the decision to violate the law. And by the way, this is not some theoretical concern. While unrelated to COVID, COVID followed years of litigation last month, a Virginia school district had to pay $1.3 million as a consequence for violating a federal law, and the school board up there felt like it was making decisions in good faith and based on their interpretation of the law. $1.3 million. I'm not here to steer the debate, but I want you to know what can happen. So how likely is it that the worst could happen? We know that, that is, it is a fact, that young people, that the chance of a young person getting seriously ill with COVID is extremely low. Minuscule is not a bad word. Infantissimally small is probably an awful word. But there is a maddening lack of data on the risk of a child contracting a serious case of COVID at school, much less carrying it home and infecting others. It's just hard to find data that you can rely on. And while I'm no fan of the CDC, I did see some of their data that suggested eight children out of 100,000 will contract such a serious case of COVID as to be hospitalized. Now, there are so many zeros after decimal in that data that I can't express it as a percent. However, factor yet to the lowest common denominator translates that one in every 12,500 young people who've contracted COVID will have such a serious case as to be hospitalized, assuming that data is a factor in personnel. We don't have 12,000 modern students in our school system, but we are in that ballpark. And therefore, if the statistic is correct, we can't dismiss the possibility that one of our students will be hospitalized. I fully expect that hospitalization of a child is serious enough for a family to hire plaintiff's lawyer to file a claim and to claim gross negligence if they possibly can. So some unlucky school system that does not follow control measures likely will find itself in court looking at claims for gross negligence, and it will be the court system that will sort it all out. Now, for anyone that is worried about exposure of this public liability, the concern here is violating the law. Laws are not chiseled in stone, and they can be changed. So for anyone concerned about this issue, there is the potential for relief in two places. One is the General Assembly of North Carolina, and we know that the General Assembly is concerned about these matters. And so if you bring, if you bring the concerns to the General Assembly, they have the ability to do something about it, to give school systems options, so that they exercise the option they will not be in violation of the law. Or the other group that can change this law is the Commission for Public Health. What we're dealing with here is their regulation. They did adopt a regulation under the authority given to them by the General Assembly, but this is a Commission for Public Health regulation. There's a third way of addressing this in a legal way, and that is challenging a measure in court. But I will tell you, that is a much steeper bill to climb than getting the underlying law changed. And so I'll close on that point by saying that those who think that the Commission for Public Health has gone too far and not given school systems flexibility that are needed to address the real-world situations that we have, the answer, the practical answer is at the General Assembly or with the Commission for Public Health. Thank you, Chair. Now, my concern is the potential for exposing taxpayers to not communicating individual school officials to damages. And I know that you will consider this information in the decision that you make.
I ask you a couple of questions. I'll do what I can to respond. Thank you. So first of all, this is very scary from everything you're saying. It kind of, it probably does instill a little bit of fear, liability, lots of money and so forth. I am, I'm happy that this is not a whole of, that this is actually coded and we're not there, not having to make decisions based on, it seems, just polio or make decisions based on COVID. Something that I wanted to ask about was regarding your, take your stop sign example that you used, okay? And running the stop sign. Here's the problem, as I see it, is that we are not the police, the school system is not the police, and the DHHS... And the DHHS and, um, and the local health department are essentially kind of deputizing us, whether we like it or not. And I am questioning the actual laws that are requiring us to be the police, right? We could take a whole lot of load off of our teachers and our administration, our, um, our nurses, our principals. If we were able, um, if we weren't having to quarantine and do all this contact tracing and everything that we're having to do, they could actually concentrate on educating and stuff. I'm saying, we aren't the police, that, that, you know? I'm trying to figure out how we got turned into the local health departments that are having to, um, issue all these, these rules. Now, lawyers can end up disagreeing, and lawyers can end up interpreting the laws and statutes different ways. And from what I've been told, there are different ways of looking at some of these things. And it is not crystal clear that we are having to actually, um, issue these quarantines ourselves. Only the health department has the ability to be able to order quarantines, and only the health department has the ability to be able to order isolation. So far, all the quarantines that we have been doing, um, have been essentially requests. We have been requesting that these children self-isolate with no force of law behind it. And really, um, I'm wondering, should we be trying to be the health department and doing all this quarantining and, um, contact tracing, that maybe we're not equipped to do? This is probably better law. And me, I'm not saying we're not going to follow any control measures. If the health department issues a quarantine or isolation, then we're going to follow those control measures to the end, and we will not let them into school. But our nurses shouldn't be issuing these orders, um, to the children. We could, it would be wonderful to be able to say, look, DHHS, I don't know how we got roped into being the, um, the implementers of all these, um, the quarantines and everything that we're doing. We'll help you out, the local health department, but that's y'all's job. Y'all do that and, and not force us to end up doing this. And I know that, um, that there have already been other counties that are looking at this and have actually even implemented this right now. And yes, we're facing, um, pushback from DHHS. The more, um, school boards would actually do this, I'm wondering if it will. I don't want to cause any harm to anybody. I don't want to expose this stuff or involve people like that. But I do want to explore a little bit further to observe that we are obligated to actually do the issuing of the, um, quarantine. And all this work is a countless, god awful amount of work that all our nurses and all of our administrators have.
Just to say, I'm sure there's a question in there somewhere. I, I, I'm going to say this. So in the, in the stop sign example, uh, number one, it's become clear that no one is getting arrested, uh, as a result of these COVID measures. At least, I'm not aware that anyone has been arrested. Uh, so we don't have law enforcement involved. But law enforcement, if, if we had a police officer observing that someone ran the stop sign, then there's going to be a citation issued, and part of that is going to be in criminal court. And, or we're not going to be dealing with this. But then you got the plaintiff's lawyers who are advertising on television, say maybe you got personal injury. They're going to be the voice of the people. And it's going to be the court system that is going to ultimately penalize the school system that doesn't follow the, the, the law. And so that, that's just what I'm telling you. It's, I'm, I'm, it's my conjecture. I'm just telling you that's the way it will unfold.
But they are essentially telling us, you, school system, you have to do, you have to make assistance arrest. You, you run the stop sign, you go, hey, this is arrest. They're trying to deputize us to make up for that?
What, what, what DHHS is sorry is don't let folks who have COVID or who may have COVID become a close contact come on their campus. That's what they say. That's what, that's what they're saying.
And, and I would be fine with that, but rather than our nurses spending all this time calling up, doing contact tracing, trying to call parents, arguing with parents, fighting, saying, your kid got a, like, it's healthy, you know? Doesn't matter who you say, and we got to call the group and all that. Let's let the health department end up doing that. There's nothing, nothing in the statute, there's nothing that says we have to be the ones that is actually calling those parents and actually implementing those, those policies of the, of actually, um, doing the quarantine and doing. In fact, we can't legally do it. We can't issue these works.
We're, we are, we are doing what the regulation says we need to do.
What's, what's regulations you're referring to?
I'm looking at the CDC. The CDC guidelines record that. The paper where the, that's the Commission for Public Health regulations. That's the law. That's the law.
And I, I know when you say calculated, oh, it's a little bit legally and, and it's a little bit tricky. You know, looking at the actual statutes, you know, you read them out. The one-third of the statute number is, um, you know, 144. The local health director shall investigate, as required by the Commission, patients, units of disease, community physicians, report to the local health, report it to the local health director. So yes, we are required to report positive cases to the health director, but it's the local health director responsible to do that investigation. When you're talking about the control measures further down in that, you know, that same statute, I believe, the attendant physician shall give control measures prescribed, um, um, by the Commission. But I, I'm not seeing anywhere that it is clearly outlined that what, that we are actually supposed to be doing this.
So are, so are you encouraging people not to listen to what our nurses and officials say?
I, I'm saying, I'm saying, I think in health, the, the people who are qualified and are authorized to issue these quarantine orders and these isolations, we do not authorize, legally we cannot. I'm saying they should be authorized.
But according to our board attorney, we are liable.
We are liable if we, if we don't let them back on campus? Or we're liable, um, if, if we let them on campus? Or we're liable if we don't tell them that they have it?
If we don't follow the measures that are required by the, or the, we have potential live, potential gross negligence. And by the way, uh, just not to point out, but let's get it on the head. There is nobody up here that thinks masks are the answers. We are trying to keep your children in the classroom. And I think it was, um, Ms. Nguyen, who mentioned a kid that was suicidal because of virtual. That, that is the issue. And listen, I, I've talked to so many of you one-on-one. And one-on-one, it is so easy for me to discuss it with you in this group. And when we get in this group, it's almost like we lose our minds. We are trying to keep your children in the classroom. And if that requires masks, I'm willing to do that.
So I, I thought earlier today, I, I thought, and I'm not sure what your legal opinion is on this, but I thought this earlier today, you could support, um, what Lincoln County is doing. And they're doing exactly what I just described, and I kind of, I'm, I'm curious what that would lay out.
All right. Here's, here's your response to that. Either Lincoln County doesn't understand their exposure to liability, or they have decided it is acceptable risk to their taxpayer. One or the other. Or their taxes. That's a good question. Are you willing to put everyone out there? Are you willing to put everybody? Travis, are you willing to put the taxpayers in Carter County in position? And Captain, are you willing to do that? Put the admittedly responsible taxpayers? Rely on the election.
I, I don't see, I'd like to further investigate. Um, but I would like to further investigate. Um, but I asked about this a month ago. I asked about the exact same thing a month ago.
You have asked a lot.
I do. I do ask a lot. Everybody, it's common knowledge, everybody knows that I'm not a fan of the current quarantine policy. I have a big problem with a lot of the current quarantine policies, right? Um, but if you're, if you're really looking at it, okay? Um, Dr. Jackson, okay, so last year, I, we, we were not tracking this data. I asked, I said, you know, how many of our close contacts have we actually quarantined all last year? And if, if, if that wasn't something that we tracked. And so the nurses did a lot of work, and I'm sorry, but, you know, I apologize for the extra work. They had to go back into their notes, check out, look at, look at, look at, and look at this last year's C. How many, not the how many positive cases, but how many quarantines, um, that we had done over the past year. And over the past year, it was 3,872 quarantines, okay? Um, that were quarantined, um, because, and, and we're talking about close contact exposure. And out of that, I asked Dr. Jackson, out of these, um, all these 3,872 quarantines, how many of them, these quarantine close contacts acquired COVID as a result of close, uh, close contact exposure at school? And, and drumroll, where's Dr. Jackson? How many?
I'm not aware of any vaccination.
If not, you can get a connect across the board. And you go to the CDC website, all over the place. They, they talk about the, the, the secondary, um, rate, the secondary effective rate. And it's, it's less than 1%. 99% of these students that we are quarantining across the country, everywhere, 99-plus percent of them are perfectly healthy that might have been COVID. That's, that's a lot of this data school. I, I want to, I, I want to back up my, I, I at least want to back up my fellow workers. Um, because I know without a doubt that their, their goal, their number one goal in voting the way they did last time, and, um, if, and, and maybe in the future too, really is they took, the priority was keep the kids in school. I don't doubt that in one sense, and that was a priority. And it was, well, we got this stupid rule that we're having to follow. But if we want to keep the kids in school, we gotta do it. We don't have any choice but what we can do.
Don't compromise.
And I, and I, yeah, and I'm trying to end up investigating and seeing ways around. But my fear is, and my feeling is that if they made a, I wonder, if they made a rule that said all the kids have to wear a hat, hat suit, because that would reduce the number of board, would be going on without school. If they said, well, maybe, um, if all the kids wear, have to wear blue shirts, which they COVIDed mean, okay? And that was the rule, which I don't, but if they don't, if they don't have a quarantine, I, I might fall between there somewhere.
So Travis, so my question is, are you willing to ignore that? Are you willing to ignore it? Like a quarantine that our attorney just said is legally enforceable, are you willing to ignore it?
Yeah, what?
Right, the city, the, the, are you willing to?
Um, I, hey, can you take, can you take a question, please?
Mass dollars. Do you, do you have, do you speak to any other attorneys that agree with you, or are we?
Uh, uh, other than DHHS, are there any other attorneys that would agree?
Mass dollars.
May I ask you another question?
There are, I don't know, obviously, seventy-five school orders in, uh, in the state. And I believe we share information, and one of the most common law firms is the Paris Smith Law Firm in Raleigh. And they just have, they were in a half dozen or so, a hundred, a hundred school board, and, and we're. The, the school orders that I'm aware of do a pretty, that this gives. What I hope you do is to, uh, you perfecting of, uh, law respect on them. So my question is, how are you planning to get around that? Just not follow?
Um, no, I, 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 hold on, but I'm saying, um, I think I would like to, first, I know.
I agree with you.
I know that education lawyers, I know probably what their opinions go into. I can guess what their opinions may be, but I do want to further explore what this, um, this particular option of, of avoiding, of trying to quarantine left. And right now, it's laid out, and it's, you know, it's laid out to the foot, you know, eight minutes, six foot, 15 minutes, whatever. In Ohio, and in Massachusetts, and, and Utah, they're doing other stuff, and I've been, I've, and that is up to us, unfortunately. And I, I'm trying my hardest to try to convince DHHS and everybody else, hey, look. And there, they're doing problems. They say, hey, if you're in close contact, put on a mask, and then you can stay in school. Some of them are saying, you got to test a couple of times negative as you go. But we're not sending these 99% of our students home that, I mean.
We've been there. We've said that. We totally, everybody up here agrees with that. I don't think it is responsible. Listen, I want me to say one thing. For everybody that stands up here and says, wait till election time, we can't wait. I mean, listen, this is not something that we're choosing. So we're, we're trying to do, if you would just please listen. We are trying to do a best for every single one of your children, whether you wear a mask, if you don't wear a mask, if you're vaccinated, if you're not vaccinated. That, that's not our decision. That's your decision as parents. But we're trying to get together in a public setting. We are trying to keep kids in school, and I would like to ask Travis and Captain, you both fought like hell last year. Captain, I think your child spoke in Raleigh, and thank you for doing that, to get our kids back in school. We want to keep our kids in school, so what is your plan if you take masks off and do virtual?
Okay, here's my thing. I'm starting out wasting, or I'm starting wasting any taxpayer dollars in the county, but making masks optional is not a good call. Um, quarantining is the problem. The toolkit is the problem. Yes, yeah. Public schools are the only people under the toolkit. Public universities aren't under the toolkit. Community colleges aren't under the toolkit. So our public schools under the toolkit. Yeah, I would like to look on those, and possibly draw a product that is a toolkit.
But that's where we need your help. That's where we need your help. We didn't talk to legislators. Haven't been to the general system. If we had our own quarantining law rules, that things may be different. But they're not, I, I'm not going to put your dollars or my tax dollars live. I'm just not going to do it.
Well, I went to Raleigh and Melch to get schools open. I went back and moved to get rid of masks. We get masks made optional, and then we get a new protocol, which is quarantine. So here we sit with a quarantine, okay? I'm fine. Let's put the mask on, but let's quit quarantining kids. The only way that other, that other, that you're living at lunchtime, you're not extended TV hours, there's got to be a way to do another mask call for more than 15 minutes, so that we're not quarantining hundreds of kids every day.
Change the quarantine policy when you can. In the meantime, take the masks off of kids. I know it's wrong. You're doing it to be in, in, in church. To not put yourself in risk, but you know it's wrong. Travis, so tell me what you're going to do. After we take masks off, and that avoided quarantine number doubles, triples our staff, and then we are virtual. So then are you going to fight them?
I think it's very, I think it's interesting, I didn't think it was very interesting, um, that at our different schools, where we've been quarantined, and actually different administrators and different nurses are, um, are actually doing quarantine, that we have a substantially different number of quarantines going on. Some people are much more aggressive, and there's a little bit of subtext in there, you know? And, and, and there's a, we have some really, some of them are really aggressive, and they're the COVID moxies. And they're, you're COVID, you're 14, you're 14, you're 14, you're 14. And some administrators are a little bit, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm.
Question, Travis, how do you address virtual learning if you take the masks off? And it's so convenient, both of you say, I'll take the mask off. So I got a question for you. If, um, if we didn't have, if we got rid of masks, if we had a mass, um, massive, excuse me, a massive amount of quarantines, and we were disregarding the local health department, uh, North Carolina Department of Health and Services, uh, quarantine rules.
quarantines, theoretically, could they shut us down?
Yes, either can shut you down, if they find that that is necessary.
Kids are dying.
So, our way of, it's the opinion that we all want the same thing, we want to get rid of the mask, we need to deal with quarantines, but we've got to figure out a way to deal with it.
It's time for everyone.
Is that correct, Travis? Travis, please let us call.
Last reading, I liked the ideas you came up with. And actually, Parker already mentioned pretty much the same thing to me before, something very similar, to the idea of, hey, that was the, the school by school, you know, we do a school by school, school track, okay? Once we're at whatever percent, then that is an automatic, all right, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to end up masked, kind of deal. And I wondered, is that still a possibility?
Well, that's my one, if you're doing it ten weeks. Yeah, what's your number, fifty, eighty percent?
No, what's your, I mean, off the board, we, I think, I don't know, but I'm looking at the floor here. You listed that last, and I remember. And then, and then what happens is, we see, we see like, oh my gosh, this school, man, they're doing a great job. They're not quarantining, you know, hardly anybody. And then we got another school that make, do it like quarantine a lot, we could say, "Wait a minute, hey, hey, can you help this school out? Are they quarantining so many people?" And we could try to figure out, actually, get our quarantines down. But if it hits the magic number, whatever we decide, then sorry, mask back on. But we don't want to go virtual, we don't want to shut down that.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted you to say that.
And right now, if we're quarantining all these public children, our interest are keeping virtual kids and in-stay kids.
And quarantining, having kids is ridiculous. But that's why we got to say that there are eighteen, seventeen hundred and fifty-eight kids that would have been home had we not had these on.
How do we? And that's probably not according to the rule, all the rules that actually, all the rules.
Except, yes.
I like, I like.
All right, but can you come up with a, come up with a number and tell me what your number is?
My number's not gonna be what you're.
I'll tell you what other school systems are doing, three to five percent.
And that's about five percent of their student, of their population is, is COVID. Then they say, then that flips the switch, automatic masking.
No, automatic virtual.
I could be okay with five percent automatic, automatic masking. Kind of, you know, I don't want to send people, I don't. And I get, every single, hold on, every single one of our principals have said, "Look, this at the very least, we hate the mask." They said, all of them, and everybody, "We hate the mask, but at the very least, because of this stupid rule, at the very least, we get kind of quarantine less because of the exemption that they put in." And I've asked, "Can we have the exemption, can we tweak it?"
Let me interrupt you real quickly, every single one of our principals have also said, "We hate the masks, but we have to have our kids..." I don't think anybody would argue about the educational gap from last year. Nobody's arguing.
So they, they have started to recognize, they have started to recognize that we are quarantining fewer people because of the exemption, not because of the masks, but because of the rule, quarantine rule. And of course, it's all out the window, since we vote much, you know, and there's, but that sucks.
Well, you're not gonna, they're gonna eat the spicy.
No, I'm saying that sucks.
They're gonna eat the capuchin.
I know, they're gonna have a new play, but. I like your, I like your black hat, you know, having some, a metric.
No, I don't know what I should say. From Arizona.
And again, I told you the data, that ninety-nine plus percent of these kids who are COVID, is futile, ridiculously futile. And yet, we're gonna keep up, you know, so we're gonna keep following the rules. We're good robots, we're gonna follow the rules, all the rules, and all.
Let me ask you a question. As I understand it, at last meeting, we implemented the least restrictive quarantine that we could, correct? Under the government.
Are you talking about the seven-day rule?
The seven-day rule.
Now, that, that's, they still have to be out for a week, but that will get them back.
That's the least restrictive that we could, correct? Well, if we were to, that we were given an option, seven-day quarantine, which is fair. Now, to go back to your earlier comment, if we went, the health department, did all the ordering, and we got out of business, and they followed the law, we were closer, they did other students. So they followed the law, that's totally, if they implemented it, we'd be lucky to have two members in our school.
And that might be a good point, then, is actually. And I know initially Nina Oliver had, was, was, in our last meeting, was willing to kind of work with it, to be flexible. But somebody got a hold of her, and all of a sudden she changed her team.
I don't know.
I'll probably run that one.
Has she still willing to work with us in presentation?
I wasn't talking about that, I was talking about some flexibility to jingle with the.
Is that when you recommended two and a half being set sixty? Is that what you're on?
Yeah, the, when we, in our last meeting, when we were talking about, there's, you know, we specifically talked about, no, the HHS is not coming in there, the health department isn't coming in there with their tape measures being six.
So are you saying?
Six, they're not coming out, they're taking six foot. So somebody, some, some teacher, I don't know, some president are doing that. They're actually, they set their cruise control on fifty-five, and they're not going sixty-six, fifty-seven. But you know, there's some principals and some nurses that are like, "Okay, so we're going sixty miles an hour." What happened to that? Yes, I am. I'm not saying anything explicitly, I'm just saying, if we, I'm saying if we, we don't have like some COVID moxies over there trying to quarantine every little person they can, that it's, "Oh, I know it's black and white, I know it's, there it is."
It's all secondary, it's wrong to maintain masks on kids. Everything else you know is wrong, it's a secondary issue.
So, so, we're just talking, we have first-hand experience, we give you an opportunity to talk with first-hand experience, but what we need to do, we need to come up with a game plan moving forward. We can't make, you know, a decision one way or another. I would like us to have a concise game plan, or have a move forward, or have a, what have we set a benchmark? On, you know, moving in and out of masks, to take the emotional out of it, so that we set a goal to, you know, come up with, you know, whatever, with Lincoln County, whatever they're doing there, you know, we, we need to not keep kicking this hand down the road, we need to have a concise game plan of moving forward before we walk out of here. So their mask ban is going right now. So when we last made the decision, two meetings ago, we made the decision to take masks off, and that's when the case percentages were five percent, less than five percent of, you know, the cases versus the, positive cases versus the tests. What about if we explored setting a benchmark and come back in two weeks to implement it?
Are you talking about cases, quarantines?
What is the benchmark that the health department uses? They say they're at thirteen percent right now.
Cases, right?
Correct, thirteen percent cases. What if we use the five percent benchmark for school cases?
Actual. I would go at five percent with benchmark.
Now, if I said, we need to actually draw two numbers, you want to, you. We need to put into a motion a day to implement this, after our due diligence is done. Are you, you're sure I'm on this, Travis?
Yeah. I'd like you to restate it, please.
I would like to see us come up with a benchmark to move in and out of masks. Where I totally agree, where you take the version out of, by case, by school, by, whether it's that school. I agree with that percentage. We need, I have a little time to figure that out, but we need to come up with a benchmark. We can do this, oh, you're gonna, you sit up there and listen to them, y'all are joyful, I, but would also get buy-in from the community not to send your kids to school, which we do that. Correct. So we're like a partner. I'm totally on the way.
The, I don't know what the question is. The right answer is, state eighty percent, I would put sixty to gold, five percent below.
Correct.
State gold, five percent below.
What we're gonna do is, I don't know.
Well, right now, we're at one point eighty-five percent.
No, we're at one point eighty.
The dashboard shows under one percent. I'm looking at our piece. I'm talking about the number of percentage of cases in our schools, that's all we got about at the last meeting.
Well, together, we did, we used the five percent in there, we still have to, we're having major. So we've got a two-fold.
And the one that's part of the year of quarantine.
Um, well, when they keep doing what we've been doing. It's not, it's not the cases, it's the quarantine. That's the only thing that we're talking about. I love the plan, I'm trying to keep performing virtually, and I think everybody else up here is too. So while cases are one of the best rates, quarantine is still one. So why don't we go to a percentage of one quarantine?
If there, some of those schools are quarantining hard too much, they're being far too aggressive.
I don't know that I'm, I don't know that I'm really willing to come up with a number. No, no, I don't know that we need to come up, I would like for us to have a goal to come up with.
Two weeks?
Two weeks, open up the school system, try to figure out our numbers with quarantine. And that's fine, I'm not expecting you to come up with a number, I'm expecting us to put together a game plan to move forward so very soon, we can have something that moves in and out of masks, or not masks.
You can protect the kids that COVID means, where they cannot COVID.
So what, in the meantime, what we need, that's fine. I think we probably need a motion, one way or the other, to move forward with the tariff. Obviously, we've got a lot of quarantines. Okay, quarantines is the issue, and now you don't can be as upset as you want about masks, but quarantines is the issue, and we've got to do, we as a board, you know, we all separately talked to senators, we talked to Hatch's office, Morgan's office, Cabinet Druid's office, and, you know, we talked to Jeff Coltrane, and, you know, the governor, deputy chiefs of staff. We need to work better together and talk to these things. More importantly, I hope to see y'all, a lot of your ire on us, and I understand that.
I do it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
They're saying we're over quarantines.
Well, I, we are one hundred percent agreeing with you. But at this point, at this point, we need to move forward, we need to move forward with game plans, and we have got, we've got a quarantine issue, and we have not addressed it too much.
So are you, so buying it, even if we will come up with a percentage? Whether it's my school, whether it's two weeks from now, whether it's next meeting, you know, I have one, one rule with this board. But no, I like, I have the, I have the ability of a number, and I'm moving it, and I have the need, and it's, you know, personal perception, that way we get community buy-in, a certain number, if you can, that's it.
The most sick, who was quarantining, our sick?
I'm glad, I'm glad that you're referring, if you're trying to come up with stuff, I, I'm hoping this, you know, I want to hear for, and maybe have, so we get some better buy-in across the board. Hoping that one of y'all will laugh, and maybe make most of the conversation. But I, I, I'm even opening up my eyes a little bit on stuff now, I'm not like crazy or anything, but, but I keep, keep, I like where you're going with what you're talking about and all. And I, again, I know Neil does it like this, and I, I don't want to do anything to kind of mess this up legally at all, of course I'm not, but I still, it's very, you know, I look at what is being done here with, uh, just not breaking any laws, not just saying, "Look, we'll cooperate, help the department, but we just can't do it anymore, it's too much for us." And I, I think there's something to that, and I literally advise that there's something to that particular, that particular strategy. And what they did, they said, "Look, we're done, we can't do it anymore. Health department, if you're thing, we'll cooperate all we can, we won't let it back in school. You know, you, you know, we're going, we need to kind of help you with student population, so it's not that, but quit making us call and actually, um, actually do the stuff." That's putting the burden on them, you know, actually putting the burden on them, but asking why we produce our quarantine. And then we're not breaking these rules, it's them doing it, you know?
We let our schools think about figuring out multiple ways, like at lunch, go outside for the last five minutes of lunch. Have more PE time instead of lunchtime. So that there's, you know, the fifteen minutes, the only time with the mask off, and see if we can quit quarantining healthy children.
Yeah.
Wrong, quite a bit. I'm going to, does anybody have a, see if I have an emotional habit of how they'd like to move forward?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the mask mandate, and between now and the next meeting, come up with metrics per school where we can do in and out of masks.
We have a second one.
We have something else.
If we get bigger school, we back up. But can we, can we, it'll surge them on, I don't like it.
Well, I don't talk about it, I mean, I don't, that's what, I don't know, we had two weeks, you get all the numbers today, so I mean, yeah.
You should have the numbers.
Any other discussion?
I would like to figure that out.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be. Unless you want to go.
Okay, um, it moves the previous question, it is now time for a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. I'm worried about the waiver of liability.
Yeah.
You have five, four, two against in one month, you have the metrics to move in and out of masks. Very good, thank you.
Can parents sign away those two relationships with liability?
Hold it, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.